Okay, Board, we are now going to go to 10.2, which was 10.6 if you're looking at the old agenda. This is now the third reading. This is for Centerville Elementary School for the new zoning plan out in the Gilbert community. We're going to go ahead and get a motion in a second on the floor and then we'll open it up for discussion. Do I hear a motion to approve the Centerville Elementary School zoning plan as presented?
Madam Chair, I may with the Board approve the administrative team's Centerville Elementary School zoning proposal as presented at third reading.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Oswald. Do I have a second? Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Okay, I'm going to now turn it over to Mr. Salters and then we'll open it up for questions and comments following his comments. Thank you, Mr. Salters.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board. Tonight, it's my pleasure to present to you third reading of the Centerville Elementary School attendance lines. As you recall, this school will open in August of 2020 is our current schedule. And so, we are trying to establish attendance lines to make that happen. Centerville will become a K-5 school as well as the current Gilbert primary site location will become Gilbert Elementary and also have K-5. Actually, it'll have 3K through grade 5 and Centerville will have 4K through grade 5. So, as you recall, rezoning is a pretty common practice in this district and when we do this, we look at a number of considerations. As we have listed here, we've gone over these in the past, but using facilities efficiently is a primary goal. And minimizing, obviously, division of subdivision and other things that you see listed here. And we really try to use natural boundaries and roadways when we can so that the lines make sense and are easily discussed with the community and recognized. So, as I mentioned, that Centerville will be opening in August. This is a prototype, so this will be the fourth version of this plan that we've built with Rocky Creek, Meadow Glen and Deerfield being the other ones. So, that's a rendering and it's actually starting to look like that if you've ridden by. These front canopies are up and some of the brick is starting to go up on the exterior of the building, so that's pretty exciting to watch. We had a number of feedback sessions in the community, one at each of our schools affected. And then, we also had online feedback that was solicited. We actually had 40 written comments and then 38 online feedback forms filled out. So, pretty good balance of both. Really give a shout out to our communications department for managing that process and collecting that information. Really appreciate that. There were three themes that came up in that feedback. We've gone back through and looked at all the feedback and really since the last board meeting after second reading to now, we only had a couple of pieces of feedback that came in and they fit generally in these categories that we have here of travel concerns, daycare concerns and immersion program consideration. So, just to take a look at the travel concerns. Obviously, we have Centerville that's going to be up here in the northern part of the community. Right now, of course, this is all Gilbert Primary School attendance area and all Gilbert Elementary attendance area. So, with Centerville being built here, there's a need to divide the attendance area. Gilbert Elementary School resides right here. And I've highlighted some of the travel distances for you with 8.8 miles being the furthest away to Centerville in the lower portion and 9.7 in the upper portion. And that actually decreases the travel distance for those folks. And then, four miles over here, Gilbert Elementary School, we still have, these are existing travel distances because they're already going to this location at some point, 10.6 miles. And then, 12.5 from the lower portion here. And so, we recognize that there are some students, generally speaking, in, lost my point, in this area right in here that may have to travel near, you know, the current Gilbert Primary, future Gilbert Elementary School site. And so, the administration is recommending that we approve 10 school choice slots, assuming the lines basically stay where we are recommending. 10 school choice slots available at each school location to help with these, whoops, I'm sorry, with these folks in this area that may want to attend Gilbert Elementary School. We've gotten some feedback from people in this area that has been mixed. I mean, many people are pleased with the lines and want to go to Centerville, which is where they're zoned. And we've had a few folks who were concerned about driving past, you know, the current site to get to Centerville if they, you know, they have a route that they may choose to go that way. And so, we feel like these 10 choice slots will give folks that are interested in staying an option.
And actually, if I could add to that just a minute. Part of what we were discussing here that those 10 choice slots would be reserved for people in the Gilbert attendance zone as opposed to opening up 10 choice slots from across the district because it's a special rezoning opportunity. We'd like to reserve those 10 slots just for the Gilbert folks. And I think that's something, I don't know we've ever done that before, but that was part of our conversation moving forward is that there would just be 10 choice slots for this area.
Yeah, and that's a really good point, Dr. Little. We have not done that historically when we've had school choice. It's been open to anybody in the district, but we feel like these slots would be designated for folks in the Gilbert attendance area. So, we feel like that helps alleviate some of the travel concerns that we have. And so, moving on to some daycare concerns, some of the bigger challenges that we had where there are two daycare centers that are located on Broad Street right here that is a portion of the attendance boundary. And they're actually on the southern portion, if you will, of Broad Street. And so, they're in the Gilbert Elementary Zone. And so, there was some concern about students attending Centerville and being able to still have transportation to those daycares. And we've actually worked that out. If the line stays where it is, we will be able to run a bus down Broad Street and, you know, let those kids off and, you know, make that a daycare stop so that they can attend those two daycares. So, we feel like that met the needs of many of the folks that were having challenges with daycare. There are some other daycares available in the Centerville Zone. And also, I would point out that Centerville will have an after-school program there locally as well as the intention, I think, with Mr. Branham. So, there are a number of options, but this obviously opens up two options that folks are already using. We feel like that'll help with that situation. And then, the immersion program, there was a good bit of discussion about immersion and a number of considerations that we've looked at. Of course, there's been conversation about having the immersion program located all at one school. And if it was located all at Gilbert Elementary School, the current Gilbert Primary School site, basically, we would have that school open over capacity because of the volume of students that would be there. If you put it all at Centerville Elementary School, the school could handle it from a capacity standpoint. However, transportation is a big problem. In the afternoon, there are some 67 students in the immersion program that ride the bus home. And so, and that divides out pretty equally, so you would be cutting off a number of students.
And that's just 3rd, 4th and 5th grade.
And that's just 3rd, 4th and 5th grade. Yes, sir, good point. And you'd become, I'm sorry, that's just 3rd and 4th grade, Dr. Little. You would be cutting off a number of students for participation in that program, potentially because of the transportation issues. So, the recommendation, you know, has come out to house a Spanish immersion program at both locations. Another consideration that was looked into was grandfathering certain grade levels so that you might have 3rd, 4th and 5th grade all attend Centerville as an example and have K-1 and 2 at both, you know, both elementary schools. You know, that becomes problematic when you start incorporating siblings into the conversation because, you know, and then you limit travel, you know, bus pickup and so forth. So, it really starts to break down when you start looking at all the variables that are associated with that. Some other recommendations were to house it all in one location and provide shuttles or use shuttles to accomplish the grandfathering between schools. The idea of shuttles, you know, seems like it's a really good idea until you start really actually trying to implement it. Shuttle, you know, shuttle service, we have to pick up our students and get them to school first and then you would have to ride a shuttle over. But, you know, let's just say you got them to Gilbert Elementary and then you had to ride a shuttle to Centerville. You're potentially looking at a 10 to 15-minute, you know, shuttle ride. And then, by the time you get that child into a classroom settled and ready to learn, it could be as much as 20 to 30 minutes. And then, you flip that around in the afternoon and do the same thing. It really becomes problematic because they've got to get back to the other elementary school so they can catch their, you know, homebound bus. So, you could potentially lose 45 minutes to an hour of instruction every day by doing the shuttle service. And, you know, we feel like that's a really a big loss for our students. And so, what our recommendation is to provide full immersion programs, again, at both locations. This will result in smaller class sizes, you know, in the upper grade levels for a few years. But, we feel like that's actually a good thing when you have lower class sizes and more direct contact with teachers. The other key benefit here is that transportation is provided for all students. And so, by having it at both locations, they just get on their normal school bus and ride. And so, that becomes a very convenient thing and it doesn't limit anyone from having access to the immersion program in these areas. We have stated here that emerging students who live outside of the Gilbert attendance area, that are currently enrolled in the program, will work with them and place them, you know, where the enrollment best fits by grade level in the district. So, that's kind of our take with the immersion.
Yeah, if you don't, yes, I'll jump in. I really think the full immersion programs at both Gilbert and Centerville serve as a win-win for both groups because of the significant afternoon ridership. You know, in the past, what has happened is when we've, when we have rezoned and you move from, you know, whatever it was, when we did Meadow Glen and Meadow Glen Elementary and Midway Elementary and New Providence, we did that rezoning. You know, what could happen there is that people are still relatively within the geography of the other school. And so, this Board has historically not done transportation out of zone to attend an immersion program because it's relatively close by. Certainly, here in the Gilbert situation where it represents 1/3 of our entire school district, that certainly could be much more problematic. And so, I look at that as really a win-win. It's a smaller class size for a couple of years, certainly. But overall, none of those parents will have to choose between transportation or other things and attending the program. They have that opportunity to do so. And I think, and I think they're both will eventually be, you're planting a seed at both programs that will continue to flourish for years to come.
Okay, so, looking at our projected enrollments, right now, with our numbers, Centerville would open at 705 students approximately, and this is, you know, grades K-4 through grade 5. And then, Gilbert Elementary would be approximately 816 students, K-3 through grade 5. You know, and I'll just tell you that when we did Beechwood, I think we showed a number of, you know, approximately 900 students enrolled at Beechwood. And I think on the 45th day, there were 900 students enrolled at Beechwood. And I'll be the first to tell you that, well, you know, we're pretty good at this stuff because we've done it a long time. We're really not that good. But, it's a lot easier to project middle school enrollment because most, if not all, in some cases of the students are already in your system. And so, you can just see the cohorts go up and you have a growth factor and that's it. Elementary schools are a little bit different because you don't know how many kindergarten students are actually out there and how many kindergarten students are going to show up to enroll. And so, it's a little bit of a different animal with elementary, but we anticipate those numbers being very close to start with in these two attendance areas. So...
Can you go back and say what your goal was for Gilbert Elementary?
As far as the capacity?
Yeah, where you went and what were the...
Yeah, so, you know, we're really, that's a good point. Gilbert Elementary School, when you start getting into the 870 range or so, you really start to run out of space. And I'll tell you that Mr. Moody would probably tell you they're comfortable here, tightly comfortable. And as you get, start adding more and more students, you're going to get into a situation where they have people, you know, in nooks and crannies that, you know, we really would rather not use for students. And certainly, we don't want to get into a situation where we have to use portable classrooms in Gilbert Elementary School. That would kind of defeat the purpose. And so, that's why we've kind of created that buffer. We do anticipate some growth. While I've got this slide up, I can show you, there's a good bit of growth occurring up here on Highway 378. There's a good bit of growth right down from the school. There's a neighborhood going in right here. This area right in here, MacArthur Road, all in that area, there's some stuff going on there with, I'm sorry, MacArthur down in here, Gilbert Elementary Schools area and Deerfield sits right here. So, a good bit of growth in this area of Gilbert. And so, we have some buffer built in. And additionally, if you'll recall, we will be repurposing the current Gilbert Elementary School site as a 4K center in the near future. And that will allow for the 4K and 3K programs that are housed at both of these locations taking up classrooms to be relocated and that gives them additional capacity in the future. So, we're timing that out so that those classrooms open and are ready for the future growth that we anticipate in both areas. So, so, looking at the line specifically, we are not recommending any changes to the lines from second to third reading. I've got the, you know, the lines highlighted here, but basically, you know, this area follows Wire Road. We come into the town area. This is obviously Louie and then we kind of take a little jog here and then this is, follows Broad Street. And again, this is where the daycares are that we would be able to serve if the line remains the same. Comes down to Green Hills Drive, gets on to Croupp Pond. And then, this is kind of the follow-up to that. The connecting point would be up here, so Croupp Pond continues on down. You grab AC Balk Night and Camp Branch and then finish up off here on Two Notch. Just for your orientation, this is Lexington 3. And on the previous slide, this little sliver up here is Deerfield. So, I'm sorry, going the wrong way. So, we're not recommending any changes from second reading to third reading to the lines. And just to recap briefly, you know, immersion programs, we said, would be offered at both locations. 3 and 4-year-old offering would be at Gilbert Elementary, 4K at Centerville. Currently, no grandfathering planned at this time because all rising 5th graders would actually change physical school locations. And then, 3 and 4-year-old programs will move to the new Gilbert attendance area, early childhood center in the future, as I mentioned. That'll create some capacity for us. I have these meetings up here just as a recap. You spent a lot of time looking at these lines and working through this process, going all the way back to January when we had first reading. And then, we had our community input meetings in February with second reading and obviously, we're here today with third reading. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding the lines.
Mr. Salters, what is the target date for the 4K facility to open? Do we have a date nailed?
So, we're looking basically, and Dr. Little, you may have some other ideas, but we're looking at this coming year being kind of a planning year. And so, the center, we would hope to open two years from now. And that's, you know, that's our goal.
That'd be a relief valve for the...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Did you want to add to that, Dr. Little?
No, that's what I was going to say. We had to slow that down just a little bit as we were really trying to make sure we grabbed a model for that program. We wanted to make that, make sure that was an excellent model. And of course, the idea with putting a children's museum and some other ideas that we wanted to put together, felt like we needed to be able to measure twice and cut once.
And Ms. Hill, just to clarify on the response from the community, have you had additional response since you last provided that, the last time? Okay, great. Okay, and I did ask Mr. Branham and Mr. Moody to get that out to the community. So, and I did speak with Mr. Moody and he said, adding the 10 slots at each school, that seemed to answer the issues that the parents that he had spoken with, that answered the issues they had. And he was very appreciative that you did that. Any other questions? Dr. Guyton?
Yeah, so, the last time I had kind of asked about the immersion and it seemed like the majority of the feedback we were getting was trying to keep those classes together, if you will. And as I kind of looked at it some more and of course, as you guys looked into it, that seems to be less of a line issue because if you've got somebody up at Top of Shore Road and somebody down at Austin, I mean, there's no good line you could draw to keep those classes together, if you will. So, I think that issue may be less of a lines issue and more towards that programmatic side. So, you know, obviously, I think if there were an unintended consequence to come out of that by disruption of those, I'm assuming we could address that from the programmatic side as opposed to the physical line side. Would that be, would that be a fair statement, I guess?
I think, I need you to be a little more specific. I don't know what you mean, that we can address it from a programmatic side.
Just meaning that if it became so disruptive by the, by breaking up the classes, if you will. I mean, I think we've done all we can do essentially by providing immersion at both schools. But it's, you know, if the desire is to keep, if the desire would be to keep the classes together, I think the only potential thing that could come into play there would be a special consideration for attendance, but that would involve transportation provided by the parent. That's obviously not something we could provide.
Correct.
Okay.
And if I could just point out, Dr. Guyton, that the immersion classes are kind of shuffled every year. So, I don't necessarily, and Dr. Little, you may speak to this more since your daughter's involved, but I don't, I don't go, you know, from 2nd grade to 3rd grade with the exact same, you know, 20, 25 students in my class. They get shuffled within that class, I mean, within a couple of classes every year. So, you know, this is kind of a normal process that would occur in that...
And it's temporary. That's the other thing, it's temporary. You know, this is going to be a short-lived problem. And I think that's the, again, not that it's not an issue and I certainly can understand where the parents are coming from, but it's a short-lived issue.
Right.
So, the benefit, you know, sometimes when you deal with these situations, I think what we try to do is, is here's the, here's the best we can do. I'm having a hard time seeing you, I'm sorry. That computer screen is kind of in the way. But, you know, sometimes it's about the best, you know, so here's an issue, so we can't really resolve it this way, but here's a way we can mitigate it.
Right.
And I think you'll see that in a number of the solutions that you have here. You know, the 10 choice slots just for the Gilbert folks. I think that helps mitigate those folks that are really having a problem with that. We can really try to minimize that. And I think likewise with the immersion program, because so many of them deal with different versions of transportation, it really allows them to take advantage of the immersion program and not have to choose about whether or not, you know, we can reorganize our entire life to make sure somebody goes and picks up the child from school after school to go to daycare or wherever they can go. So, they have that opportunity to do so. So, yes, they'll be split up from their friends for temporarily because they're all going to Gilbert Middle School. But on the flip side is, they get smaller class sizes and everybody gets an opportunity to continue in the program. And that's a pretty good thing, I think, in terms of mitigation.
Well, and most importantly, the academics are preserved. And so, by maintaining the immersion at both sites, we, you know, you've maintained the commitment to the community about the academics of immersion, which is the best possible thing, I think, that you can do.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Board?
I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. A couple of things I noticed as I went back through here, some of these questions had not been answered. One of those being an employee who works at another location whose kids attend Gilbert. Do employees not have school choice?
They have employee choice.
Okay, okay, so, I guess y'all will take care of that. She'll still be... How's the district going to staff K through 5 Spanish immersion at both schools? When we've had issues in the past staffing just one of these. I know on here it says the teacher came around Thanksgiving, but another one told me that the teacher didn't actually come and this may be a different class as well until January. So, do we know if we have enough Spanish immersion teachers to staff both locations?
According to HR, we do.
According to HR, we have plenty.
Or we will. I mean, I don't know that they've been hired at the moment, but we will have them by next year.
Okay.
I think we approved some tonight.
We approved two tonight. But, I don't think those were both Spanish. I think one of them may have been a different language. So, they have not been hired yet, is what you're saying.
Well, we haven't approved this plan yet either, so that's after this, we'll start doing that stuff too.
Then, another lady made a comment about transportation. Buses, you haven't fixed the issues this year. Our children lose instruction. This is very important. I get notifications all the time that buses are running late. And I know in the mornings, buses arrive to schools late. That's just something we need to look at in general. I just feel like if people are going to take the time to fill out these forms, I'd at least like to try to answer their questions. One mentioned Spanish immersion at Rocky Creek. So, I understand some of those parents, those kids are going to Gilbert from Rocky Creek. Do we have any plans to expand the immersion program to Rocky Creek?
We do not. They already have a coding, computer science immersion program there.
Okay. Just, I guess, the lines in general, some people are upset that they live right there, almost within walking distance of the school and they still have to drive to Centerville, which leads to one of these questions. With Gilbert growing rapidly, why doesn't Peleon absorb some of the area south of I-20 instead of those people driving to Gilbert?
We have, you know, similar issues in Gilbert with capacity. If we're adding classrooms to Forts Pond Elementary School, which would be the attendance area that that school touches. And so, it would not make sense to send students to Forts Pond and overload Forts Pond when we have capacity at Gilbert Elementary School, at least at this point. And that's something that may be looked at, you know, in the future. More than likely, down the road, there'll be an elementary school that sits between Forts Pond and Gilbert Elementary School, you know, to serve that area.
What about Peleon Elementary? Are they near capacity as well?
They're in a similar situation, but again, they're further away. So, you would actually drive, if you're looking at the geography, you would drive past Forts Pond Elementary School to get to Peleon Elementary School. So, you'd be sending students that are, you know, currently in the Gilbert zone, at the bottom of that zone, down past Forts Pond and get them to Peleon Elementary School. So, that doesn't really make a lot of sense either. They'd be going through one attendance area to get to another one.
Right, kind of like we're doing in Gilbert, driving past Gilbert Elementary.
No, this is, it would not be the same thing.
But, there's still like those, you would have to pass one to get to the other, which is basically what most of these people are complaining about.
When I say we're passing, you would actually be driving 10 miles to get to Forts Pond and then driving another whatever mile, two miles to get to Peleon Elementary School. In this situation, when you're talking about driving, you're literally driving, if you're in here, well, let me go back to the one that has the distances. The furthest point down here is 8 and 1/2 miles and there are routes to go here and then over here. So, you can choose to go this way if you want to and that may be a more convenient route depending on what you're doing. But in situations like this, you would be driving, and I can't even do it because of the map, it isn't, doesn't have it demonstrated, but you'd be driving way down here off the screen and then sliding over to another attendance area. And so, it's a much different commute than what you're talking about here.
Right, I'm just saying like what the people are complaining about is kind of the same thing.
And I think that was one comment.
Right. Okay, why are you planning to make Centerville so different from the other Gilbert schools? Why not keep the red and black colors and the Indian themes?
Each school has their own identity and that's up to the school community there. And, you know, the Board, and we did a lot of research and the Board named the school, Centerville Elementary School because that's the Centerville history and legacy of that community. There was a school there. And so, each school in the district has their own identity. And eventually, and I would also add to that, eventually, if you look, you know, off this map to the right here, you've got all of these different elementary schools. And as you can see, you know, fast forward 20, 25 years, this is going to look the same way. And so, you're going to end up probably, you know, at some point down the road... And so, you're going to end up probably, you know, at some point down the road having another middle school, at some point down the road having another high school. And so, when you start having schools tied to that same color and feel, you end up in situations, you know, like Lexington Elementary School was for a while, where they're, you know, they're tied to the Lexington High School colors, but some of their students end up at River Bluff. And so, as you continue to grow, you can't really maintain that. That's why we encourage each school to have their own identity.
So, that's made at the school level, I guess. I mean, just a couple of comments. I would really have liked, this email this teacher sent us where she explained how we could save six FTEs and four FTEs, and I understand that y'all said transportation and shuttling is an issue. But I would like to see something like she has broken down, broken down from administration and presented to us, saying, this is why it won't work, this is how many students we have on the bus, this is how many students would be car riders, you know, and then go through the different options of staggered start times and just give us things to look at so we could decide, you know, okay, we can take part of this here and part of that there. But that's just some comments going forward. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, I would like, before we do any kind of rezoning, to have some kind of committee put together that's made up of teachers, bus drivers, parents, before it actually comes to the board for first reading, because that would work out a lot of the kinks before it ever got to us.
Any other questions or comments, Board? Mr. Oswald?
I'd like to say something about transportation. Since I was a bus driver back in 1969, 70, and I had the longest bus route in the district, which was in Gilbert. But I think by dividing the attendance area up, it's going to probably, correct me if I'm wrong, solve some of the bus scheduling issues and bus times. The routes won't be as long, they'll be cut in half. So, probably, we won't have a lot of those issues to have to deal with.
Well, you certainly bring up a good point, Mr. Oswald. I mean, some of the routes will be cut down considerably, and so, that will help, you know, on those travel times and distances for students on the bus.
I think a lot of folks don't understand, it is the largest attendance area in the district. I mean, it's 17 miles long. So, that presented, always presented a transportation problem and scheduling. So, just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Did you bus students to the old Centerville?
I'm sorry?
Wasn't there an old Centerville Elementary? Did you, were you dropping?
1905.
That would have been a horse and carriage.
You can throw a shoe at him, Mr. Oswald. Anybody else with questions or comments, Board? Okay. We will go back, let's go back to our motion. We have a motion from Mr. Oswald to approve the Centerville Elementary School zoning plan as presented, and we have a second from Ms. Green. And I do want to make one comment. I want to thank Mr. Salters and his team and Dr. Little. I also want to thank Mr. Moody and Mr. Branham. There is a lot that goes into doing this, and people don't realize it's, you guys have really done some heavy lifting, so thank you. So, we now have a motion and a second. All in favor of the zoning plan as presented for Centerville Elementary School, please say aye. Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay. So, we have, let's see, three, four, five, we have five in favor and one opposed, and the motion carries.